I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And since Skip knows our procedures here, we won't go through the housekeeping. If you have anything to say, just come up and make sure we get you on mic. Laura, if you do the roll call, please.
Mayor Jeff Phelan.
Present.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
And others present are Commander Heath from the Anoka County Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Unless there's any objections, I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I would like to pull out Consent Agenda B just for discussion here, the claims. And then I would second if there's no other changes. Anything else, council? Mayor?
Under introduction of new items, do we want to talk about the logo as long as it's sitting there in front of me?
Nope. Yeah, we'll put that on as then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Under council items, could I please add the recycle center cleanup, the central center date?
Anything else? Hearing nothing. We have a motion. As amended?
Yes, as amended.
A motion to approve the agenda as amended and a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And there is an aye, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
I second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commander Heath, you're up.
Good evening again, everyone. Just a quick update this month. The sheriff's office responded to 129 calls for service in Nowland in the month of April. Calls to Bar Nun were down to three, which was nice to see, a little bit lower number. And I wanted to point out a couple of noteworthy calls for service. And these, there's two of them specifically that I wanted to point out because if you've heard me speak about before in the past that Nowland has similar issues to any other city, sometimes it's just the frequency in which we encounter them. But we've, you know, from time to time, we find folks here that are involved in illicit drug use and things like that. And there were two on the same day that I wanted to point out. And I'll get into some of the specifics here. On the 5th of April, deputies responded to a medical call here in town of a possible drug overdose. At that time, it was reported that a 26-year-old male at the location was reported to be overdosing on heroin. People at the location gave the overdosing party two different doses of Narcan. The male, upon deputies' arrival, the male was breathing on his own but was unresponsive. He was transported to the hospital by ambulance. What I found a little bit concerning, and it's just kind of a sign of the times though. First of all, one of the people present at the location had overdosed earlier in Coon Rapids and law enforcement and medical personnel had dealt with him and he had to be hospitalized. But within hours, he was already out and back participating in that drug use. The same drug use that he overdosed on hours earlier.
Oh, I hate that word.
Which is a, I bring that up not to make light of it, I bring it up to try to showcase to people how powerful some of these drug addictions are. You know, I can't imagine most people in this room, if something nearly killed them hours earlier, aren't going to go back to that same activity within hours. But I use that as this is just how powerful that addiction can be and how powerful the drugs are that are out there. The other piece that I wanted to showcase was that not only did a bystander have one dose of Narcan to utilize on this person, but a second dose. So, these people are so used to having the potential threat to their life that the people that do this type of activity, we know that in some places, one person's job, as it were, in this drug use scenario is to be the person that can administer Narcan if something goes bad. And that's just a, I bring it up as a point of information so you guys are all aware of things that can happen out here.
That's gonna be my question, where does somebody get two doses of Narcan?
They can get, they can obtain that legally. I don't even know as if, at this point, when it first came out, it had to be prescribed, but I don't know if it has to be prescribed anymore or not. But there's, I know for a fact that there's family members that get it because they have an addicted person in their household and it's their safety net if something happens. That doesn't sound like this, that was this case. This was other users had it in the event that something happened to one of the people that was using. So, just to...
Yeah, it's a different mentality that says, I know what can happen here. In fact, we're prepared for it to happen, but we're gonna go ahead anyway. And like I say, and then go right back to it, it seems unusual. But the people I've known with addictions, judgment fails them regularly.
And that, this isn't the first time we've seen that. When I oversaw our Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force, we would have cases that we were investigating where someone overdosed and by the time our, by the time law enforcement would get there, the narcotics were gone. And then our narcotics officers would find people in the parking lot at the hospital where the victims were taken to be treated. And the people that were with the victim at the time they overdosed are in the parking lot doing the very same drugs that made this person overdose. Not even, not even concerned at all that what this person here ingested a half hour ago just about killed them. People are rolling the dice over here with the same exact, what was left over of those drugs over here. So, just to, you know. And again, I don't take anything away from people that are addicted, but it just goes to show what, what the risks are people are taking to get that high. And it does happen even in places like Nowland. And then on the same evening, a deputy was on routine patrol here in town out at Twin Lakes Park after hours and saw a vehicle in their after hours, stopped the vehicle and began a, just a field investigation of what they were doing there after hours. Ultimately smelled the odor of burnt marijuana coming from the vehicle. Further in the investigation, they found a felony level amount of marijuana wax, which is basically just a more potent type of marijuana. It's not as simple as the green leafy marijuana that you're used to. It's a refined product that has a much higher...
You mean that we've read about, not that we're used to.
I apologize, I didn't, I didn't mean to paint the council with that type of brush. But yes, different than you're used to hearing or reading about. And it was just, it's another one of those things, you know, that, that either out after, you know, in the park after hours and up to things that are generally no good.
Were, were they Nowland residents for chance?
These were not, both out of town.
That's, you know, that's one of the things that as a council probably have to take a look at. Maybe we can work with the sheriff's department to see where we're seeing violations of things with residents versus... The park could be a problem if other communities are closing their parks and their access to water and that could be a very popular place this summer.
Yes, yeah, you're absolutely right. But in the past, we have seen even when other cities have their parks open, people that are looking for what they think is an out-of-the-way place that people aren't gonna take notice of, they're trying to use that park facility for those things even then. But you're absolutely right, if other places are completely closing everything, it might be something the council would have to consider to limit the use there. And just another interesting call, on the 24th, a theft was reported at Bill Suparet. A male had gone in and paid for some items inside the store, but had attempted to steal the sweatshirt from inside the store as well. And very odd, they gave us a vehicle description and one of our deputies down in Southern Andover saw the vehicle later, stopped the vehicle and found the driver who ultimately admitted to stealing the sweatshirt and was charged with the theft and some other driving violations as well. That was a 35-year-old male from St. Paul and there was a female passenger in the vehicle from, not from the city, but she also had felony warrants for her arrest. So, just passing through and causing problems as they did. So, but I was happy with our deputies, they heard the, you know, one deputy was in Nowland dealing with the call and another deputy in Southern Andover is doing his patrol in that city and saw the vehicle and was able to take that action. So, happy to see that, that the deputies are out there working and paying attention. And then just during the month, I also worked with...
Commander, on that, so when a call like that goes out, goes out to the sheriff's deputies, would, if that person would have been in Ramsey, would they have heard that call too?
Yep, they would have, since we all use a centralized radio system in the county. Basically, the north half of the county is on one radio channel and the south half is on another for dispatching. We can monitor each side so we know what's going on. But yes, the St. Francis and Ramsey and sheriff's office, City of Anoka, all work off that same channel. So, they do hear those calls that are close to the jurisdiction borders and stuff like that.
Well, it's quite possible that Carter been driving around Ramsey.
Yep.
Somebody could have seen the same thing.
Yep, they certainly could have if they...
And that would explain why when we get calls here, quite often see Ramsey. At least in the southern part, I see Ramsey come responding quite often.
Yep.
And maybe St. Francis does on the northern end.
Yep, and it's the same if we have deputies that are on the, around the borders of Ramsey or Anoka or St. Francis, we do the same thing. If we have a call that's close, it's kind of, it works very well that way. Not a specific border there. There's a border, but there's not, we're all willing to help each other out. So, it's very beneficial. And then I just worked through a process with Lori regarding some of the illegal dumping issues at the recycling center. We got a process figured out, so if there are people found dumping illegally there, we've got a process for reporting it and then getting the information back to City Hall. So, steps can be taken to work through that administrative process to deal with the owners of vehicles and stuff that are involved.
And that will be on our council items, if you could hang around?
Certainly.
With that discussion tonight, so...
Certainly. And that's all I had, does anybody have any questions for me?
Noticed our calls, even with the... People being shut down, we actually went up, we get the highest amount for the year, 129 calls for service. Are you seeing things pick back up? I know in March that they were, radio calls were way down.
Yeah, I think just like with, this is part of that ebb and flow where somehow people will get to a new normal and they'll get back to old routines or if it's interrupted their routine, they're gonna, you know. People argue in and of themselves when they're not cooped up together all the time, but now people are spending more time together, we are seeing more domestics and things like that. So, I'm not surprised that some of the calls for service are up. Especially because you also have people that may have been traveling to work elsewhere who are now home more hours in the city and can lead to other things as well. My hope is that it would stabilize and kind of get back down even just a little bit lower to where they normally are, around that 120 mark.
Yeah, year over year, we're certainly doing well, but... Maybe I would like to see the lower numbers, so...
Yeah, always, I agree completely. Nice.
Council have anything for the commander?
Commander Heath, I've been wondering, is there a standard of some kind for penalty for people who dump illegally in a recycling area? That, that, is there something out there that other communities do that we should be enforcing?
I haven't seen anything different in other communities. I mean, I think when I spoke with Lori, I think it's a misdemeanor violation of the city code, if I'm correct, for that, which is very consistent with other places
Okay.
that I'm aware of, for that illegal dumping.
So, they, do they return and have to pick those things up or is that something?
Well, a lot of it, a lot of it depends on what the process is through the city. We can't, we can't order somebody to come back and pick them up, pick up items that they dropped off. If we prosecuted somebody, the court could order them to do A, B, and C.
Okay.
But it's likely that the city wouldn't want those items that were dropped off, left sitting there while this plays itself out in court.
A misdemeanor, that's potential 90 days and a thousand dollars?
Ninety days and a thousand dollars. Your average person who does not have a criminal history though, isn't gonna see a, likely going to see a jail term out of that or the higher ends of those fines. A lot of times, if it's a first offense for somebody, there's a, there's usually some stipulations that... And that's really up to your prosecutor, working with the courts and defense attorneys as to how they want to move that through. Once it gets charged and we help out with that initial part of the investigation, we really don't have a say in what the other pieces of the process are, like fine amounts and jail terms and things of that nature. But it definitely will be different depending on who the suspect is.
In cases like that, say that we're applying, who gets the fine?
Well, there should be, depending on how it's all broken up, that a part would go to the prosecutor and I think a part goes to the county and then a part goes to the city. But that would be something that your city prosecutor should be able to tell you exact breakdowns on your, on your ordinance violations.
That's probably a discussion when we talk to Kurt that we want to have. Come on in.
Commander Heath, can I, this is the surveillance information. Since you're gonna be hanging around, you can see what we're talking about.
Hi, anything else for the commander? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, our next item is the financial audit report. And we did, for a variety of reasons, Mike had sent out, our auditor had sent out an explanation letter with his report. Normally, he's here to present the report and answer any questions that have come up in addition to his letter. And for a variety of reasons, we thought it'd be better not to do that in person here tonight. The audit report has to be filed with the county. Is it with the county, Lori?
I guess.
By the end of June. So, we do have the opportunity with additional questions that we can forward to Lori, to Mike. And depending on how our quarantine situation goes, maybe address this at our June meeting. So, people that have specific questions in addition to what Mike had, as you're going through it, and I did note a couple of here myself, so I would recommend that we table this. Write down our questions, forward their, communicate our questions through Lori and have Mike respond to us and then do a final passage in June if all their questions are answered. So, I make a motion to table it and have the council forward questions through Lori to Mike and address the final passage in June.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments?
I think in light of the situation that, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
In light of the situation, I would think that'd be acceptable, especially, you know, so, I mean, some may have had their questions for, save for tonight, but, you know, I would think we're, unless, you know, there's no, there's no penalty for us putting, waiting, waiting a month. And so, we can go from there.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, we're waiting because of Mike, is that why we're waiting? Because we need Mike here to...
If you had questions that Mike needs to answer.
Okay, and he was unable to be here.
Yes.
Okay.
Normally, he presents in person.
Yeah.
And under the circumstances right now, we thought it best not to do that in person. Any other questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to table and the council to present any questions through Lori to Mike and then address final passage in June, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that the council approve the temporary habitation for the address of 22840 Sugar Bush Road, based on the information provided by our planner, Liz Stockman, as the property owner.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments by the council?
Is there an ending date for the temporary?
Councilmember Blake.
Habitation, yes.
Right now, the estimated completion date is December 1st. Looks like we have Jake and Lindsay here with us tonight?
Yes.
Hi.
And December 1st, are you good with that date?
Yes.
Let's say the, the end of the year, December 31st then, give you a little touch factor.
Sooner, sooner the better? Sooner the better.
Yeah, for us too.
Yeah, you don't want to be out there with too much snow. It's a nice new camper, but you'd rather be in there.
Absolutely.
You mind if the council comes by and sees some time out, what you're doing out there?
Absolutely.
You're stuck back in the woods pretty good, Lindsay.
Yep, half mile long driveway.
No, any other comments or questions from the council? So, we appreciate you finding a home in Nowland. Anything we can do to help you get organized, but looks like a good plan that you've got, so...
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed, none, motion carries. You're good to go.
Kind of reminds me how this all happens. Very first time we met, was actually in Walter's house. I was the job soup on his bill in his new house over here. First time we ever met was in the house and I absolutely couldn't stand her. And then in...
It was beautiful.
And then as the building went on throughout the year, I seen around a couple other jobs. In November, I asked her out on a date and December 31st, which is our deadline, was actually the day we got married, forty days later after our first date.
Congratulations.
It's kind of just ironic.
What changed? Did she get better, did he get better?
He just got, he was just persistent.
It's just, it's really ironic how we met Nowland, now we're living in Nowland and now we're here in Nowland, the city council meeting with Walter.
And this property I grew up in, that's my childhood property, so...
The one you're rehabbing?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, this is your old home?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Well, that's a... Good for you guys. I find it interesting stories, so...
And around childrens.
Was killed in a car accident a week before our wedding. And then throughout the last four years, we've been going through the whole process and trying to move out here. So, it's literally a dream come true for us to be able to move out here and build this property with our family. It's been a rough and rocky road throughout the last four years, but after really making the steps with the city and talking with Liz Stockman, which has been a godsend for us, helping us with everything out there. I don't think we would be as far along as we were
No.
without her helping out, emails, personal phone calls. Just she's really been there for us at every step of the way.
Good to hear.
We forgot a piece of paper and she was, Johnny on the spot emailing us at nine o'clock at night saying, hey, you guys can get this in so this can happen for you guys. So, she's been really, really helpful for us. Appreciate her a lot.
We appreciate you choosing Nowland and, and the story yet to come.
Yes, absolutely.
We appreciate the good words from Liz and the experience you've had with the city and we hope it continues to go extremely well for you and so...
Yep, it's been really pleasant, even with talking with you today. Since I got picked up by building firm today, speaking with Linda on the phone about fire burning and burning vans and stuff, she's like, no, it can't burn yet. Okay, perfect, just want to make sure we're not, we're not closed. So, it's been really, really positive here in Nowland for us, the short time that we've been dealing with the city, so...
And I'm back home, so...
Yeah, really excited.
We're good, we look forward to.
Yeah, me too. We won't delay your stuff anymore yet.
All right, well, you have our blessings, so...
Thank you.
Go forth and prosper.
We will.
Very good.
All right, Walter, next.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
On the recommendation of our planning and zoning commission and based on the findings and recommendations, I make a motion to approve the variance to allow the construction of a new 30 by 42-foot accessory building at a distance of 135 feet from the ordinary high water level of Bass Lake instead of the required setback of 150 feet dictated in the city's surrounding ordinance.
Motion?
I second it.
We have a second discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're good to go. Seems they like him nice and easy. Thank you very much. Turn to council items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 20, 20-22, a resolution urging Governor Walz to allow businesses to reopen in the city of Nowland.
Second that motion, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I feel for the businesses in Nowland and the employees that work at those businesses that are affected by this. But I would ask the maker of the motion to withdraw the motion. And my reason for doing, so that I'd like to see what actions Governor Walz takes this week in regards to the stay-at-home order and business closure. It may be a moot issue and I think we would be smart to wait to see what the governor says.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
At this time, I wish to proceed to go ahead with the motion, regardless of whether businesses, I mean, people, and people are allowed to choose, should be allowed to choose based on the 14th amendment whether they want to be open and have their business and individuals also should have the right to be able to choose whether or not they want to utilize that establishment. And we've, we've been in this situation for over a month and at least from what I'm hearing, that there's a proposal to keep this going for a little while longer and I just think at this time, it's the right thing to do that we can open up, open up the city and open up and urge the governor to open up the state and let people choose what they want to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I know, we've been, we've been getting, I don't know, information from the community that is along the lines of this order or of this request for action. People have been asking that the city of Nowland open up. So, I think this is along with... So I think this is along with the residents are asking for, so I support this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Uh, I want to ask Dan a question. What are the businesses that are not, are the only restaurants? Which are, what are businesses that are shut down other than the two restaurants?
Official, I mean, for actual, in place, you know, is actual buildings, it would be the restaurants, but potentially, there's other, I mean, in theory, anyone who has like an IUP or a CUP, like, um, had to have a hair salon at their house, technically, they should be able to also be closed, or if they cut hair, or anything that was deemed at that time non-essential, um, so.
It's essential.
Yeah, some of us don't, you know, like Commander here, you know all this.
And Linda. Too much. Ah, okay, I see what you're saying.
My wife's starting to threaten me, so.
I mean, I just think, again, if the business wants to be open, they should be able to be open. It's, I mean, have, whether it's takeout or sitting in a restaurant, it's still being, the food's still being made by the same person. Or the same group, same restaurant, and there's, McDonald's is, already has designs redesigned to handle social distancing. I've already seen, uh, models of plastic sheets that restaurants are hanging from the ceiling between tables and using like lazy Susans to distribute food so that, and, you know, wouldn't, you know, it's covered by less hands. Um, there's enough, the, the state has operating procedures and policies that you can open, so why not go ahead and do that? Why, why not go ahead and do, allow that?
So do you have any inkling that, that our governor would even consider, I mean, we need the blessing from the governor to do this?
This resolution right now is, is telling the governor that the city of Nowland would, would request that, that he...
We're just asking him?
He, um, withdraw the stay-at-home order and not continue it on, from, from, starting on, on next Monday. There have been several cities around who have passed similar ordinance with similar wording. There have been cities, Oak Grove being one of them, that have gotten even stricter. As far as, you know, that, as far as, you know, saying that they want to be open or not. Um, so this is just going, let's, I mean, this has happened before. This is, we, we've had various, um, incidents of similar nature back in the 50s and the 60s. And, you know, stay-at-home wasn't the, wasn't the method of choice back then. And people got sick and peop- things were just open and everybody went, went about their normal business. There's been one, um, certified case of COVID in the city of Nowland in this entire time. So, I think we can figure out how to do it.
My question is, we're just asking, I want to just clarify this. We're just asking him that we can do, but if he says no, there's no possibility we're going to open this up until July, then we won't open?
We may or may not. I mean, this is, this is the resolution that I've put forward with this wording as it is, where we could pass the resolution and, you know, send it, send it to the, I would think we could send it, send it to the governor and to say, hey, here's a community in Anoka County that wants this to be over.
So you're just asking him that?
Right now, yes.
That's what I want, doesn't it?
My original, my original draft had, had much more severe wording in it, but I, I backed down.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think, uh, Bill's has shown us a great example of what a business in Nowland looks like that's, uh, still operating with being COVID-19 conscious, protocols put in place to try and protect people. And people have the option to come in with a, with a mask or to try and protect themselves, or they have the option to go somewhere else. Uh, like, say Walmart, which people are still allowed to go in. Uh, go in there, do business with or without a mask. So I don't think it's unreasonable, an un- unreasonable request. I think we're already practicing it by and large in other places. I think it would be great for the city of Nowland that it would be opened up, and we'd be able to return back to some sort of normalcy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Angel.
Um, I, I'm sorry to say, I can't support this, um, and I understand Dan's, um, reasoning for bringing it forward. Um, I would like to refer back to my comments, so let's see what the governor is going to say, um, first, before we take any action. Um, so this, this resolution, we send it to the governor. If he doesn't act upon it, there's nothing, you know, nothing can change, um, if the governor chooses not to act upon it. And I, I personally don't know if he's acted upon any of the other resolutions that, that cities have sent forward. Um, I, I think a piecemeal, uh, way to, you know, not a good way to go at it. I think it's, and hard, it is hard that it's each, all or none. Um, but I think there are enough examples, um, if you watch the news, there's enough examples of somebody that opens, um, with, I'm sure, all good intentions of, um, abiding by social distancing and the other requirements, and it doesn't happen. Um, I, I listened to today, watched and listened to the Senate, US Senate hearing, um, with the four experts, um, from the government. And I did not come away with, come away from that with an easy feeling. Excuse me. Um, I, I don't think we understand, uh, I'm not a medical expert. I don't know if anybody else on the council is a medical expert. Um, I don't know if we have the expertise to be able to say that we can open safely at this point without specific guidelines in place, um, from an agency that's in control of this. Um, you know, do we open ourselves, do we open the city to possible litigation? If, if a biz, if ABC, um, company opens and there's an outbreak and we've given them carte blanche to open, are, are we responsible? Are we liable? Um, I, it just, it makes me nervous. So I, I, I cannot support it. And I, again, I support our businesses, um, and I feel for them. I, I feel for their employees. Um, it's something that is out of their, out of their control. I understand that. But I believe that our governor is making good decisions based on the information that he's been provided. And, and those decisions he's made are, are, I'm seeing those reflected by people who are in the medical industry, um, that this is an unknown, and we need to be very careful before we open up anything. And, um, I know that won't go over well, but that's just my personal belief. Thank you.
I think that, uh, first of all, we aren't opening. We are, we're requesting, requesting of the governor, and I've been through the League of Minnesota Cities with this because they've, they've cautioned cities to not be capricious in, in, uh, directing activities. That if, if the council wants to give carte blanche to businesses opening, there would be insurance liability issues, as you say, because we are directing them and, and the League would encourage us in that. But the League did recommend the, the proper way to do this is to pass a resolution by council. And they, they gave us two pages of what you don't do. Um, and then they've summed it up by saying the right way to do it is pass a resolution, uh, by council, recommending or asking the governor to consider. And that's why we've, we've chosen the milder route here. Some cities are very aggressive. Some cities are actually opening, and, and there are some problems with that legally. Uh, some people are much more aggressive in their resolutions. We don't, do know that there's at least half a dozen local communities that are, that are either last night or tonight going to be addressing resolutions. We have the Anoka County Economic Development Coordinator who's been funneling a lot of information our way. And, uh, she's actually provided a letter to the governor that 70 chambers have signed on to, asking for the opportunity to do what the major chains are doing. To be able to wisely, and, and again, with every, uh, document she sends out, she says, "Here's how you do it safely." "Here's how you do it in compliance with the governor's, uh, different resolutions that he's been put out." And so I think people are being very cautious to go line by line through what the governor is, is saying and be compliant with that. But we want to join in, and it's been requested by the local chambers in our communities to join in with them and support wise reopening rather than the, uh, settling in for 18 to 24 months. And so where it's reasonable, where people can do things the equivalent of what's being successfully done elsewhere, we want that consideration, and we want to make sure our voices are heard and not just assume that, that, uh, you know, as, as Dr. Fauci said, his job isn't the economy. His job is to, uh, you know, make sure that the, the medical side of things is, is done as well as he can make it be done. And if that causes problems elsewhere, he says, "That's not his issue." And so we're trying to balance that out, saying, "We need to be healthy, we need to be wise, but we're also encouraging. We're not demanding, and we're not making any threats, and we're not going to, uh, indicate to anybody they can open prior to what the governor's doing." But we want them, the governor and his staff, to know that there are people listening and, and people that have creative alternatives, so. Um, obviously, everybody gets to vote how they feel, so. I don't think we're trying to impose on the council either. But we're certainly not going to impose anything on the, on the businesses in our community. Or encourage them to do anything that's illegal. Other comments? Seeing and hearing none, then we have a, a motion and a second to, uh, pass Resolution 2020-22 with our recommendation and request to the governor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right, public works. A modification to our gravel plan. So we're talking about the public works. I see the, uh, crack seal, looks like it's all been done for the year, 39 miles. And which half of the city do we do this here?
Um, the, it's the south half.
I was going to say, it sounds, with the expenses, it's... Looks like we did our parking lot, too? All right, you have a proposal in front of you. It looks like maybe Joe got a little help on this. It's a better spreadsheet than we normally see from him, so. The recommendation is, is within the budgeted amount of gravel and dust control. But, uh, weather permitting, we would do all those on the spreadsheet. And that's the dust control plan on the backside and the gravel plan on the front side. And the dust control, are these, uh... Do you know, Lori, are these ones we've been doing? Are there any new ones on this list?
I don't know if there are any more.
I didn't think we did 189th and Rhinestone previously, because we were gravelling that last year. Normally, we don't gravel and dust control the same year. I think the people will greatly appreciate it, but...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
If I remember right, we would dust control the year after we gravelled.
Yep. And we hadn't gravelled that road in a long time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-21 to approve the 2020 proposed gravel and dust control plan.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Mary, did you vote on that? She's still there?
She'll be.
Mary, you...
I'm an aye. I'm aye.
Okay. All right. So now we're on to the, uh, memo on the recycling center surveillance enforcement and policy. So Lori, we'll, we'll let you present this to us if you would?
Sure. Mayor and council, with the surveillance system that we've had installed over at the recycling center, uh, we would like to start enforcing the, um, the activities that are happening over there. So I did talk to Commander Heath and asked how that would work for us. If we were, we get clear pictures, as you can see in your packets, of license plates, faces, people look right at the camera. They read the signs and they take the things out of their vehicle and dump them off illegally.
Can they see the camera?
Yes, yeah.
That's why they're covering their faces, probably.
Uh, those, I covered those.
Oh.
The pictures that I have are plain as day.
That person isn't wearing a bag on there.
Oh, I thought someone was pulling their hood over.
Sometimes they wave at the camera, sometimes they just look right up at the camera and go to their car, look at the camera again and go...
Wow.
So they know, they're... But in order to have the, the effectiveness of the cameras and the investment that we put into having the cameras, I think it would be wise for the city to enforce our efforts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Lori, do we, do you know if they are Nowland residents?
Uh, no, we don't have any idea who they are.
We, we have not pursued anything at this point?
We're waiting for council direction to find out if it's approved for us to work with the county to start sending citations out and what you would like that to look like.
And we wanted to wait till we had some type of policy, so there was a consistency to what we were doing.
Sure.
But we know it works. And, and Lori, if we could, maybe at some point, I know Bob has said in the past that tours, uh, for educating the councils as opposed to making decisions are allowed. We just confirmed with Bob, it'd be nice if the council could come see the, the setup and, and see what we do have as far as the video and stuff. I mean, we, none of us have seen any of the equipment or...
Okay.
Should be nice to get a demo of.
Uh, at this time, it's all located in our basement.
Here?
It hasn't been moved to the IT room yet. We're waiting for Zayo. Once that happens, everything's moving.
Is that, that bill we got, that invoice from, that's on Zayo?
That was moving from one room to the other.
The Zayo equipment? That's not hooking it up.
The Zayo is, the equipment from Zayo can only be moved by Zayo. All of our other IT equipment was able to be moved by, um, IPS and RVs.
But that bill we, with the invoice we just got is for Zayo to move their equipment?
No.
So then, who's?
That's the only thing we're waiting for is Zayo. We're on their schedule now. That was IPS.
Oh, that was IPS?
They're the installation of the surveillance cameras.
Oh, I thought I saw something came through from LimeOne or something.
Uh, they work with IPS.
Okay. I thought they were working with Zayo. All right, yeah, so maybe we can get a demo of that.
Once we get set up, sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I don't know if this is too early to ask, but do we have any influence on the fine size? One of the words that was mentioned earlier was a thousand dollars. Do we have any input on what we would like the fine to be, or is that all handled by? Who's that handled by?
Sheriff's Department?
It would be handled by a prosecuting attorney and the court system. Mr. Mayor.
The, the fines for a misdemeanor crime are set in statute. Um, what the fine ends up being, you know, the, the maximum fine is set by statute. It's 90 days in jail or a thousand dollar.
And/or, right?
And/or, correct.
Mary, can you hear? Mary?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay.
But generally, like I was speaking before the meeting, unless somebody has a significant criminal history or there's some other egregious act, a first-time offender isn't going to see that type of fine or jail time. So then it comes down to usually a recommendation from the prosecutor, and then the judge would take under advice and what they would put, um, for that jail term and the fine.
And I, I would think their attitude when they're in court probably weighs in on that somewhat. If you are defiant and disrespectful, they're probably more likely to get a heavier sentence than...
It, it certainly can. And the other piece that may, may affect that fine amount is if the, for some reason, depending on what was dumped, if the city incurred a significant, um, expense to clean that up, that can always be asked the prosecutor to ask for, um, some type of restitution or something like that to cover that cleanup as well. But that might be something to work out with your prosecutor beforehand. Um, maybe that's something that they would be willing to do, is to forego a, forego an actual fine or jail time if the person... or jail time if the person would pay for the cost that the city incurs to get it cleaned up or something to that effect. But those are certainly options you could explore with your prosecutor.
And I think that that's a good idea, because we've always gone out of our way and now then to be the least offensive as we can and give people a, you know, break. And we know some of these people are looking at the camera and waving with fewer than all fingers and some of them are being quite disrespectful in that. But we've always tried to go on our way to say, how do we make this most reasonable? We're not looking to fine people, we're looking to stop unacceptable behavior. And if we can do that with sugar rather than vinegar, well, we'd like to do that. So that's, again, probably a good opportunity to get our prosecutor in here and just to say, here's the, here's the way we want Nowland to be represented in court. Obviously, people that are going to be scofflaws and can't be worked with, we don't use so much, but people that are first-time offenders or contrite, I'd like to be able to work with them as a council, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bryan.
On that note, I'm just wondering if we want to have our policy, because I'm assuming, you know, we have to get the information from the sheriff's office, but can we, do we have to go immediately to the prosecuting attorney or could we handle it internally with our code enforcement process? I know, I totally agree, it's gonna, it would take longer, but if they, and it's probably gonna make it more difficult on the blatant ones where they know they're dumping on purpose, but if, and I don't know how you necessarily separate the two, but if it's like, okay, you dumped two tires, okay, that should be fifty dollars. If it came down to sending a letter, hey, we got you dumping two tires, that'd be fifty dollars you can pay at the city office, otherwise, if you want, we can, you know, if you don't, then we can look into prosecuting. I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
It would definitely be more work on the part of staff, could be some cost, but again, with the intention of trying to educate people, if you were to give somebody the option of paying correctly and not having a criminal record, because misdemeanor's gonna go on their record. So misdemeanor's gonna hang with you for a while. If we gave them the option of, you know, first time, learn your lesson, pay a fine to us, pay the cost to us, would be an option, you know. Lori, I know it's spontaneous here, but what are your thoughts on?
I like that idea. I'm wondering from Commander Heath, is that something that we could do, is start off by sending a letter with our pictures and letting them know that we caught them and we'd like them to come back and pay their fine, giving them that opportunity?
Mr. Mayor?
Commander Heath?
The process that we, that Lori and I had worked out would be that if the city finds a violation, that they can make a report to a deputy. If there's a license number, include that, so the deputy can then run that license plate number, and we would be providing that information back to the city in that report. Then whatever process the city makes after that, whether you want to refer it for prosecution, have your code enforcement person work on it, I think that would be up to whatever city policy is and the directive is from the council. We, at that point, we would have provided the information that's available and whether it goes to a prosecutor or whether it goes to code enforcement to try to deal with on the front end wouldn't be of, wouldn't matter to us. There would be, we wouldn't take a position on that.
So it'd be similar to what we were talking about with the snow removal last year.
Correct.
That the city wants a chance to work with residents first, educate them, if they're not listening or they violate a second time, then the city notifies the sheriff's department, proceed. And that was also a misdemeanor situation.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbord.
And I, I'm trying not to interrupt anybody, so if I interrupted somebody, I apologize. I like the idea of us handling it internally. I'm wondering, are we able to determine, let's say it goes through the, our civil attorney or the criminal attorney and it goes to the county and the judge takes a piece and the attorney takes a piece and we get a piece, do we know what the percentages are as far as, let's say it's a thou, I'm gonna just pick a number, if it's a thousand dollar fine, what's the percentages of the, of what each entity gets? I have a feeling that we probably aren't in the larger percentage, it usually goes to the other entities. So I think by using it, going through and doing it in a code enforcement process first and an educational piece is part of that, and just so that I can, I believe I heard Commander Heath say that whether we go through the court or we go through code enforcement, we are still able to get the plate information for the vehicle from the sheriff's office so that we have the legitimate right to reach out to the vehicle owner and we're not breaking any data practice laws or public information laws. Is that correct, Commander?
That is correct.
Yeah, and Mary, we had had a brief discussion before that it's probably time to get our prosecuting attorney in here to meet with the council. I don't know that many of the council have actually ever met Kurt. Lori's only talked to him once, maybe? And one of the questions that did come up originally is how is that distributed? We don't know what, you know, all these bills we get, we don't know how much of those fines are coming to us and how many aren't. And so that would be one of the discussions we want to have, is here's how we'd like to see Nowland represented in court and explain to us your process and the distribution of fines. So I believe, Lori, you're gonna set up a meeting and so Lori will set up with prosecuting attorneys so we can have those questions. But again, I think the idea that, now, what would happen, you get a plate and you see there's warrants, a separate issue on that.
We can still provide the information to the city and then we can work that as a different habit. The two would kind of be a separate issue.
So just back, if you were, you ran them on the highway here and saw the plates and saw there was warrants, you could, if you encounter them again, you could do something separate from this. So we could, we could, again, like we do with other code enforcement, start with the educational process first. Word to the wise is sufficient, those that don't want to be wise, then we have a legal recourse behind it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Refresh me, what is the educa, I mean, there's signs up there that say you can't leave anything in recycling, so what are we educating them about?
Well, I think that...
What's the educational process?
The first time somebody does it, they see signs all the time.
Well, still, the sign says it.
We've never enforced it in, we've never enforced anything since we set the recycling center.
Okay, there it is, you're educating them, things are different now.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
Okay.
And for the people that have been doing it, you know, there hasn't been any response because we haven't had a policy to guide Oreo.
Makes perfect sense, and I like the idea of in-house.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbord.
To Commander Heath and to Ms. Strike, and I had asked this question earlier, one of the vehicles in the pictures that was provided to us, we are unable to see a rear license plate and the front bumper is not allowing us to see the front license plate. Are we, is there any limitations as to what we can do with that picture? I mean, can we post that on the city website and say, does anybody know, you know, Nowland residents, does anybody know, has anybody seen this vehicle? They are suspected of dropping items illegally at the recycle center and we would like to be able to reach out to them to correct the situation. Is that, is that something you can do or put it on Facebook?
My preference, Commander, I'll jump in first. My preference is if we were to give that photo to law enforcement, as alert as our deputies have been around the community, if we can find somebody in Andover that ripped off bills in Nowland, I think somebody could find that vehicle if we were to give that to the deputies. I'd rather not deputize people on Facebook because I don't know where that ends. But if we were to give that photo to the commander and say, we can't do anything here, but if you see that vehicle, what would law enforcement's response be?
So the front bumper's practically falling off.
Yeah, you'd recognize that vehicle if you saw it.
Mr. Mayor?
Commander?
I think what our staff would do is we could always present it at roll calls for deputies. Just so you know, each time our deputies report for shift, they get a roll call sheet of information from their sergeant that talks about the goings-on in different areas of the county, information that we need to pass, and we could include these with it. And basically what it is, is if a deputy sees this vehicle, is there some other enforcement that, you know, depending on the crime that the vehicle's committed or that is accused of being committed, and it was into what effort goes into finding it. But if they see this and they can't, you know, likely with that bumper, somebody's gonna stop that vehicle anyway and deal with that.
Do they have to have a front license?
They do. Minnesota, yes. And it has to be visible. But, so likely somebody would stop that vehicle just to identify them, but that's probably a temporary issue for that vehicle. So we certainly can stop the vehicle and identify it, and generally then the deputies take whatever action they would have normally for that traffic enforcement. And if they know that there was a dumping issue here at the city of Nowland, they can investigate that further and try to identify the people that may have been involved with that.
Let me ask, now, we're developing a policy, but quite often the deputies will either run the dogs out here in the park or do paperwork back by the fire station or, you know, go in the fire station for a variety of reasons. So they have reason to drive that lane. And the other day, I was coming by and I saw somebody get in their vehicle and I could see something was left behind, but I couldn't get behind him and get their license plate, assuming we had him on camera. But if the deputy were to be driving by and somebody were, obviously were shut down and are dropping something outside, what would the typical response be on that? If they, they know they're illegally dumping at that point?
The deputies would investigate it, depending on what is going on. We may not be able to pinpoint what was left, you know, if the deputy gets there, sees a vehicle leaving, we've talked about it before, where our deputies are stopping people that are at the recycling center after hours and dealing with them, so they're aware of what's going on there. So if a deputy sees somebody there, they're likely going to investigate it if they're not tied up on another issue. And then depending on what the scenario plays out as, if the deputy gets there and there's a truckload of stuff there, it would be very difficult for them to say what, if anything, was left by this person that they just stopped that was left there, especially if the person doesn't admit it. So there could be limited action that could be taken, but I, I'm very confident that our deputies would stop vehicles that were there after hours and if they had the ability to cite them for dumping illegally, I'm confident they would as well.
So if there was one item there, it'd be similar to finding and dumping into a ditch, like...
Correct. Yeah, if they can develop probable cause that it was that person that they've stopped that left this stuff in violation of the city ordinance, they can cite them.
And if they get them, they would normally get their information, they'd pull their license information, and then Lori would have the camera.
Correct.
So...
So we'd be able to look back to see if that was corroborated as well.
So Lori, I guess what we need to do is take a look at, you know, is there a line you need to know about when you go right to the code enforcement versus this needs to go to the sheriff? You need to be able to distinguish that or you're not wasting time. To Linda's point, you saw the cameras, you waved at it, you were obnoxious in demeanor, maybe those go right to the sheriff. But we have to have something that isn't arbitrary, though.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bryan.
Or people see a camera and they think it's fake and they're just waving to wave.
Yeah, that happens, so. I guess we'll have to, we'll have to try the letters and see what kind of response we get.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Because we're finding you're wasting your time, then.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbord first and then Commander Heath.
I, I think whatever direction we go, we have to go first to the sheriff's office to get the report.
Oh, absolutely.
So that we get that thing. And then, you know, we, if we can do the old, Joe Souchere used to say, the sternly worded letter, yeah, and just say, you know, send them the picture, you know, we have you on tape, you dropped this, but we have to have, we have to come up with what is our fine going to be if we're gonna do it internally, what is our fine going to be? And it can, you know, we can say, these are, you know, based on what you were observing leaving at the center, this is what your current fine is going to be. And maybe we do like, an option would be is like we do with a building permit, if you don't get a building permit and we, you are caught building a structure or doing something, it's a double fine. And let them know that this is, this is what your fine is, this is what you did, and send them that letter and without a response, fast, like in three weeks or whatever week, time period we determine, then it will be forward for criminal prosecution.
That's what I was thinking, along the lines of the permit violations, that you just automatically double it. Commander, you were gonna do?
I just wanted to check with the council and with Lori, when we had originally talked about it, Lori talked about having the, an administrative citation issued through the city. Is that something that, the direction that you wanted to go or did you want us to do more of a criminal citation based on this? I just wanted to be clear, because I think we've gone a couple of different ways.
Yeah, I think my understanding is we want to go with the administrative process first.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbord.
My fear is that based on those percentages, that we won't recoup enough money to cover our costs. I don't believe now and that, looking at the attorney's bills and all the continuances and this and that and this and that, that we recoup any money out of criminal tickets that are issued or arrests that are made based on what we are paying our criminal attorney.
Yeah, I think that's a discussion we need to have with Mr. Glazer, because that is, been a mystery and we should have it before we discuss next year's budget, so.
So I think any policy should have a doubling of the fee plus an administrative charge for staff time. Because other words, the taxpayers are picking up the bill for the violator.
I think it makes sense to, you know, have an administrative fee to it. I mean, again, we don't want to be arbitrary or capricious, so, you know, Lori, you'd have to come up with a structure that says, this is what it takes to do this, you know, the process. It's similar trying to justify any expenses we have with building permits. If we're gonna say that we're, there's administrative fees to it, we have to be able to justify them. But if we can justify the administrative fee, I think that's reasonable. I also think that once the recycling center opens back up, I'm hoping that this decreases, you know, people can get in there during reasonable hours or when it's open and not have this problem. The bigger issue then is going to be all those that, if we're charging a fee for something and they don't pay the fee, it might be worse, because there's a lot of things without paid stickers in there, so. And depending on what we learned in our recycling days these next couple of Saturdays, maybe our fees can go down, too, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbord.
And I, and that's, Keith, that our city clerk in the strike is going to have to figure out, is how, one thing that CM dump it in front of the building and take off, but if they're bringing an appliance in to the recycle center, how do we know if that appliance was paid for or not? So that's, that's gonna be more challenging.
Your camera's inside, too, right, Lori?
Correct.
So maybe we get bigger paid stickers.
That's, yeah, and then it's, you know, and some people pay for it after the fact, they drop it on Saturday, come in on Sunday, or Monday and pay. So there's, there's gonna have to be some thought process there. That's not as easy as them just dumping it out in front of the building. That's not as easy as them just dumping it out in front of the building, so. And we don't mark tires, but as you said, Mr. Mayor, hopefully, after the, with some changes, we won't be charging for tires that don't have room, so.
Yeah, that's a challenge. I've caught people on weekends, they promise me they're going in on Monday to pay, and so, we will have to, I think we'll get better as we go along. The big thing right now is give Lori some kind of guidance here to start with the policy she has here, amend it as we've discussed tonight, and let her get going and working with the sheriff's department on doing something here, so that we can be looking at the administrative side of things, so we can utilize the equipment that's there, and start encouraging people to do things right. What we're trying to do is make it easier for people to do right and hard to do wrong.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I'm assuming Ms. Strike has already done this, but, you know, we're not the only city with a recycle center, and we're not the only city that has the issue. So if she's been able to, or has reached out to the other clerks, to see what type of policies they have, based on their facility, what they take, you know, security, things like that. And I'm sure she's probably already done that.
She's shaking her head, yes.
All right, thank you, Lori.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
If I understand it, based on chapter one of our city ordinance, we are, if this would be considered, since it's not an animal violation, this would be considered a Class B administrative enforcement penalty. My question would be for Lori, is $200 would cover costs for us to process that?
Mayor, councilmembers, I think that once we get the surveillance equipment over at the city hall, or the city office, I think that we will be able to view it quicker, and then it's just going to take a letter going out, so I think that would be sufficient.
So, I mean, worst case, we already have that. I would consider this as a city code violation, if they're illegally, you know, dumping things after hours, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Hey Lori, once you get the cooking back at city offices, I'm assuming that the only, as data, the only time that anybody would be looking at this will be when there's, somebody comes back and says, we got a problem over at the recycling center.
That's correct.
Because we don't want, become lucky lose to see what's going on all the time, but if Joe comes back, or somebody comes back and says, we had a problem, we need to look at the tape.
And that is the only time that the video is viewed.
So dating yourself there with tape, but, sorry.
Lucky Lou is probably dating yourself.
Yeah, I suppose.
Just mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So unless anyone objects, we have a six-step process, and I would say number seven would be to, at least for now, would be to handle this as an administrative code violation, and leave that up to staff to address. And that would be at least a starter of a policy to put things in place, and if there are issues, we can revisit it.
And if we were to prosecute, do we, you know, how do we involve the sheriff's department in that? Because typically, in an administrative process, once we get frustrated, we send it over to prosecuting attorney without involving the sheriff.
Well, that's basically, the sheriff has done at that time. We would, the information would be going, we've got the information back from the sheriff, here's the license plate, here's the information. Then it would be processed administratively, and then at that point in time, it would be, it would go, if it's, we're not getting anywhere, it would go to the, wouldn't it go to the prosecuting attorney, and we'd pass along the information accordingly?
So who would testify in a case like that? Because in administrative, typically, somebody from the city would be there if we needed to know why we're prosecuting somebody administratively. But in this case, would it be still somebody from the city or somebody from the sheriff's department?
Mr. Mayor.
And he.
It could be both, depending on what the prosecutor needs. A lot of it, they won't know until they start working with the defendant as to what it might be. But the deputy that took the report would likely have to testify about getting the information from the city, running their state computer checks, and identifying the registered owner of that vehicle, and then turning it over. And then, depending on if there is anything else, they might have other things to testify at. But the city personnel who were responsible for sending letters and stuff like that may also have to testify, as to their role in what happened, as well.
And we're preparing for worst-case scenario, I mean, the recycling center is generally run pretty well, so. Say, if you don't want to go there at night, if you see the door jammed open, lights on at midnight, I guarantee you, you don't want to be them between you and the door. Lori, what else do you need to be able to move forward here? Are you finding clear enough direction here?
Mayor and council, I feel like I have very clear direction, that you're comfortable with me working with the sheriff's department and sending out administrative fines as needed.
So right along the lines of what we're doing administratively already, so. All right? So from a policy standpoint, do we need to clean this up then, to make sure that we're consistent? Because we don't have the administrative part of that in here.
I can take care of that.
So what I would like to do is allow Lori to get going on that. So with the policy being cleaned up by clerk, are we ready to let her start working with the sheriff's department and with code enforcement? And then we'll approve the final policy? And that way, you can work the bugs out?
Yes.
All right? So I would motion accordingly, then, that Lori have a chance to get a final copy of the policy, and start working with the sheriff's department and code enforcement on violations while we...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would second that.
Motion to second. Comments? All right, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for, you and Ellen, for the work on this, and Commander, for helping out. And again, we're not looking to make enemies, we're trying to make it easy for people to do right and hard to do wrong, and if they insist on doing wrong, we want to make sure that residents and homeowners get stuck in. All right, building signage. Councilmember Rainville.
I do have a couple of questions from Ms. Strike, and I apologize, I just forgot to ask these earlier, so I apologize. First of all, I'm not in favor of changing the name of our city hall. That has historical significance to the building that you're sitting in now. It was the old town hall for many, many, many years. It's been our city hall since we incorporated, and I would like to see that building still named City Hall. And we would look at administrative office for the second building, or city office, because it also has, we could do administrative and maintenance, but keep city hall at the location that's now. Question I have on the bid is, it doesn't appear in the bid that installation of any of these three options are included in the cost provided, or am I reading it wrong?
No, that's clear on each of the quotes.
Okay, yeah.
It says, in description, installation to be contracted separately, and the fourth item is installation quote from a trusted professional sign installer.
And Mr. Mayor, that's, I just want, I mean, that's what I was reading, but I thought, maybe I missed something somewhere else, so. So as far as installations, do we know what any of these three options would cost to have them installed?
Mayor and council, I received a quote from one of the installers, and they said that it typically costs $150 per sign. And the other installer has not given me a price yet, I didn't know how far to go with this, if there was interest in putting signage up at all, so I can find out a more definite price if we want to move forward with signage.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Ms. Strike, which of the, is it A and A, or B and C that provided the dollar, $150 per sign?
That would be example C.
C?
Let me verify that.
C.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, not C.
Not C.
So, but isn't example...
It would be example A.
Example A, okay. So we do not know what example C and C would cost when installed?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. My, of the three options, the one I like the best is the flat wall-mounted sign. Number two, aluminum, to me, that looks, it doesn't, it looks cheap. I don't like that. To me, that looks like a highway sign. And number three, or the letter B, would be my third choice, the individual letters. How often you drive by someplace and half the letters are falling off? And so, I don't think that's, I don't like that, and if you have to try to replace them, then you've got color variances between the new and old.
So which was your preference, A or C?
C is in Charles.
Okay.
And then a question I have is, are there any thoughts of lighting the sign on city hall, the existing city hall? Typically, people are coming to the administrative office during the daylight, you know, eight to 4:30, but sometimes they're there for evening meeting, and in the winter, it's dark. So is there any thought to lighting the sign at city hall, and what's that light cost?
We do not have a quote on that. One option is to put a downlight in the soffit there, which certainly can be done, but we'd have to get a quote to see how much. There's power right there, we could run power into the soffit, but...
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The other concern I have at the city hall is that, and this might just be the picture, the way it looks on the picture, but part of the sign is covered, so we just, whatever the placement of it is, we want to make sure that it's not blocked, the soffit doesn't block it.
Yeah, that's just the shadow, because of the, that picture is the shadow from the soffit, it's not really blocking.
Okay.
The, so, let me step back here. First of all, thank you, Lori, for taking initiative on this. This has been something we've talked about for quite some time, and it is confusing to people that don't come to city offices, city hall. I understand Councilmember Rainville's concern over this being historically the city hall. My gut reaction was, no, that's city hall, not community center. But quite typically, it's used more as a community center. So I understand your logic as well, and so I don't have as much heartburn as I originally had in reacting to it. I mean, it's just, I've been on this council for 12 years, and I was part of the town board before that, and it's always just been, this is city hall. But for people that don't know that, if you're here, it's more likely you're here for a party or, you know, a gathering of some other sort. Because as you can see, very few people come to council meetings or treat it like city hall, and when it's, when we're not here, it's not city hall. It's used for other things more than it's used for city hall, so. That's going to have to be something that the council has to decide. We have a definite no vote on that. So you're getting the discussion started. If you're okay with us hammering out some of the details, let me go with A, B, and C. The council, what's your preference? Mary has said C. I would go with C as well.
I go with B.
The letters?
Yep, because it's so much clearer, and it just looks so much sharper.
I actually, if we're going to do it, I would probably do B on the city offices and the signage on the, if we're going to keep this as a city hall, I would keep the C on this, because it is more historical.
Yeah, I, like, I'd D C, and I like the idea of keeping city hall on the city hall. I didn't have gastrointestinal reaction to it, but it's always been city hall.
You'll get older, you'll start having it.
It's always been city hall to me, and I think to a lot of residents, it would be as well, so that's my vote.
Mayor and council, I didn't mean to create an issue about renaming it, but I hear the phone calls that come in, and the residents or the people coming into our city saying, no one's at city hall, why do you, why do you call it city hall? When I come into your city to do business, I go to city hall, and this is where they're being brought. So that's where my reaction is, that we need to change what we're calling, where we're doing our business, because most cities, you go to city hall to do your business. So if our city doesn't want to do that, we certainly don't have to do that, but that's where I came up with that.
No, and I understand that, that's what I, you know, as I thought through it, I thought, well, that really does make sense, because the people that don't know it are the ones we're trying to do signage for.
That's correct.
And I find myself reminding people, even that are here, we're meeting at city hall, the building on five.
Right.
You, it's not just, you can't just say city hall, because even local residents will think, okay, that's where the people are, right? So I can understand that, and I think, you know, that's worthy of discussion, but, and I would split my vote, I think the letters over it, that building makes sense, but if we're going to call it city hall...
Mr. Mayor, can we call this city offices, and this one just city hall? And we tell people, come to the city offices? I mean, I don't know. I haven't lived here as long as other people, but this has been called the city hall, and so I can imagine that that would be something that, there would be some reaction to if we change the name of it and call it the community center. It's, community center, to most people, reminds you of Maple Grove, or some big swimming pools and all this stuff, and this is just kind of a charm of an old, the old town hall, you know? Maybe we could call it the old city hall, or the old town hall, you know, something like that, where it comes, lets people have their nostalgia, because it is such an old building, and they've had it in the community, and it's been part of everything, and the polling used to vote here and everything, so. I mean, maybe old town hall or something, so that you keep it, but the city offices are down there. I mean, it's just an option. But I can see the issue with changing the name a little bit, just because there's a lot of people that have been here for a lot of years, and these names matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan.
I also know that, because I've seen it, where if you put in the address with Apple Maps or Google Maps, it, most of them, I even looked on Google the other day, it had the city hall tag as our city office. When we've said, we'll meet at city hall, referring to here, because there was no tag here, that's easily changed. I mean, Google and Apple both have, what do you want it to call, put a new PIN down, give it the address and all that kind of thing. I think at night, you know, most people, if they're coming, they're putting in, putting in their maps to come to whatever, whatever it ends up being called.
Yeah.
You put it in the map, and the map will, should take you right to the PIN.
Let me, just to complicate things the other way, if you're coming from the north, and we put this on the south side of the building, you wouldn't necessarily see that. We talked about originally, maybe putting some, something out in front of the building, a monument, or something out on Nowland Boulevard, so you could see it from either direction. Any, did you ever have any further thoughts on that, Lori?
Well, Mayor and council, we, when we discussed that, that's the same time we were talking about putting a logo. So I had a sign in mind to do that with, but we haven't been working on a logo, so this was my second try at signage. But if that's something we want to look into, and we don't have to have a logo on the sign that I'm thinking of, we could just have the words, what you want to call the building.
Even, I think that model I sent, that picture I sent through, would... Even, I, I think that, that model I sent, that picture I sent through would suffice without a logo. But I'm just thinking, we want it to be usable to somebody that's driving by to say, whatever we end up calling this, if it's gonna be Historic City Hall or Historic Town Hall or whatever it is, um, we could put it where people could see it.
Mr. Mayor, anyone who comes from the north would have, still have to come down to the parking lot. If you're driving the parking lot, you're gonna see the sign. I mean, they're not gonna.
If you go in the parking lot, the people like that.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you come down and you're gonna go someplace, you'd, you'd go in the parking lot to check it out before you gave up, wouldn't you? Or wouldn't you?
I, I found somebody driving back and forth in front, because there's nothing here to recognize the building. The, the option is, is put a monument out front or put a small sign on this wall as well.
Okay.
We know that you have to come around this way and there's a big enter sign on that door.
Right.
It, it didn't take that long to train people not to come in this door. We, we saw some old timers that haven't been here in a while.
Right.
Come walking up this way.
Okay.
But that, that converted pretty easily, so. Again, it's a good idea. I want to move forward, so, uh, question, another question I have is, um, tax. As a city, what's tax exempt for us and what isn't? Do you have to pay taxes on this?
No, uh, Mayor and council, I, we would not pay taxes on the signage.
Okay, because I noticed they've got the taxes in here.
Right.
That's a couple hundred bucks at home.
We would just need to provide the forms for them to do a little batch.
So one of the things we'd want to do is take a look at the, uh, installation cost.
Lighting.
Lighting. And then, then again, I'm gonna ask, from, from Lori's standpoint, she's the one gets the questions all day long. The council right now feels, the majority that have spoken wanted to be City Hall or Town Hall. If there's something, make it clear enough for you, if we call the, what do we call it over there, City Offices right now?
Yes.
So we call it Administration Building or, would that make it any clearer? So I think part of it is City Offices and City Hall. You assume them to be in the same building.
Correct.
If we called one the Administration Building and one City Hall, that might make it clear that there, there's an Administration Building and there's a City Hall. At least, in many people's minds, that might distinguish two different locations. But, you know, again, I, I don't want this to break down like the lo- the logo thing did and not get anything done.
Mayor and council, I, I liked the idea. What do you think of calling this the, this building, the Historic Town Hall?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
And the Administrative Office, call that the City Offices. Now Then City Offices and Now Then Historic Town Hall.
Or Old Town Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I really like that because then Historic.
Historic Town Hall.
Or it's Historic City.
Gives it a, a nice.
Town Hall. You know what? Historic Town Hall would almost fit better than City Hall because this thing was a town hall a lot longer than a City Hall.
Uh, you know, I think about that down at Ramsey, that, you know, the building next to the bank, that was Historic Town Hall there. What do you think about, um, Administrative Offices as opposed to City Offices? Because then you separate that from the concept of City Hall. Does that?
I don't have a preference on that.
Anybody else in the?
I think the word city helps direct you.
I, I.
To, Administrative Offices could be anything. But if it were City Administrative Offices or City Offices, it would help really differentiate.
I always think, yeah, I think Now Then. Now Then.
Well then.
Now Then Administrative Offices.
Mr. Mayor, I like City Offices too.
I still think City really nails it. And I like Historic Town Hall. Because then you're taking the old town hall, getting rid of the word city, using the word historic. So you're kind of keeping nostalgia of the city.
It certainly would help people be less confused. And it would serve the purposes of the historic nature of this.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I'm just, I'm looking online right now and under our building permit, um, it says, um, hard copies may be mailed to the Now Then City Office at, and gives the address. Um, I was just gonna look down like our conditional use permit. Um, I think people have been, um, I'm trying to see how it reads there. Oh, it just gives the address to it. Uh, but I, I, I like the, the Historical Town Hall. I think that's, that's, that's very interesting and it fits our old town feeling, country feeling. And, um, the, the Now Then Administrative Offices or Now Then City Offices for the other buildings. I mean, depending on which one you went with, um, you could do maintenance over the maintenance door and Administrative Offices over the Administrative Office door.
Well, we don't ever let people enter the maintenance door though, so.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, you're right there.
I think the snowplow out front helps us determine maintenance is there though too, so. We haven't had much problem with. I think the question is, I found people sitting in the City Office parking lot when we had a meeting for it. We would just have to explain to people that because we're saying Historic Town Hall, it doesn't mean it's not used anymore. Because at Ramsey, when it was Historic Town Hall, but they didn't do anything with it, so. We'd have to say it's Historic Town Hall, but that's where our meetings are, so. We would just have to explain to people that we are sitting now, but we call it Town Hall. But I, I think that would, it's a good compromise because then you could say City Offices and it'd be clear what we're talking about. And if this is Historic Town Hall, it can still be used as a community center until we have a different community center. And, uh, City Council meetings are held at the Historic Town Hall. It's still a functioning building, so. And that way you could, you could get some examples of, now as you know, we're looking for. And we'd have to decide, do we want something here and here or a monument out front? And I, I wouldn't want to hold it up waiting for the logo, even though it's not a cheap sign. But we can, uh, we'll get our logo and, and get that on the letterhead and, and maybe something on the corner there. I know when I go down to cities, a lot of cities now have monuments as you enter the cities or a prominent corner of cities. Crystal, instead of having it in the boundary of the city, they have it at their, Bass Lake Road and 81. That they have a stone monument of some sort. So we can, we can still work with the logo separately, but I'd like to get this going so that we have installation cost, we eliminate the taxing, uh, and we have some decisions whether we want logos on both, I mean, uh, signs on both or letters. I think on Historic Town, Town Hall, a sign would be better. If you want to take a look at City Offices being a little more modern, the letters, to Mary's point, you don't want to drop a W and have it be Now Then, but. Trying to make sure you get a good installation.
You know, Mr. Mayor, she does have a good point with that. I mean, I like that lettering a lot better, but she has got a point with the fact that you see that all the time where a letter drops off and nobody fixes it for 10 years.
I will, I will guarantee you, as long as Lori's here, that letter wouldn't be gone more than a week.
It doesn't dare.
She would want, blew it up herself.
That's right.
But if she had to wait for an installer, it would, it would not be.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Um, one thing, uh, other thing I would say is, is that, um, that whatever type of spots we use, it's not, um, that it's bold and, and easily readable as people drive by it.
Right.
Well, we don't have street signs that light up stuff. We don't, um, I, I, we have to make sure that, that it's easily readable, um, from a distance.
Yep.
So. And, and I, I appreciate everything Lori did on this. It's great she got us going on it and, um, have some conversation on it and, and I do think it's important that we mark our buildings, um, and then we just, as, as council members or, and or residents, you just have to, when you're speaking with people, you have to just reiterate, yes, we're at the old stor- Historic Town Hall for this meeting. Oh, you need a permit, then you go to the City Offices. And, uh, you know, we, there's education there that we all are, have to be part of.
Yeah, and I like historic rather than old because it's a, it already says old. But we will do something with this interior eventually, make it look historic. All right, um, anything else Lori needs from us on that? Do you have?
Mayor and council, I know what I need to do and I will continue working on this.
All right.
Get back more information.
No, I kind of like having an audience. It's, it's unusual. Thank you for coming.
I enjoy hearing you.
When I first used to come to town board meetings.
Thank you.
There's always YouTube.
Yes, you, you guys do know that, uh,
You're on YouTube now.
Our meetings are all on YouTube. You don't want to see what's going on. You can't make it up here, but you're welcome to come anytime, but.
Are we playing over this?
Financial report.
All right, so Lori, you know what you're doing on that, so you'll get back to us with more information. Claims. So I was, I was talking to Lori, um, what we got with our packet was $46,000 worth of claims. We had a chance to go through, we had invoices and, and, and then this afternoon, we got another $70,000. Some of them caught my eye because there's two bills in there from Ramsey for 30, 35, $3600 apiece. Two in one month. We paid some last month and it, and one of the questions right now that I have, just in Ramsey in general, is we're getting billed for things, yet we haven't actually changed our JPA. So we're paying for things we haven't actually agreed to formally yet. And so I'm, I'm always watching for the Ramsey bill, so I noticed when two of them came through that I don't have a, I didn't have a chance between 3:30 and the meeting here tonight to evaluate $70,000 worth. And to Lori's point, she's getting bills in and she's trying to get them paid right away. And we had a policy at one point that, especially with the contractors where our biggest bills come from, is they have to be out by the time the packet is due, so it was Tuesday. If the bills weren't in on Tuesday, so we can't review them, then they waited till the next month, rather than have Lori try and get them in here and us try and race through them. Because $70,000 is significant too, to make sure we're, we're getting them right. The other portion of that is, I would like to get to what we agreed to next month, going back to the workshop on the Thursday before. So we have that opportunity to discuss these things. So if we have a question, we're not all sending emails in to, to Lori throughout the week, but we can, we can say, here's some questions I'm gonna have, but we get to the workshop and the idea is to communicate. The majority of the council is asking these types of questions, so we have bills. That would also eliminate any bills coming in after the workshop, because we didn't have a chance to discuss them. So I, I have a concern with the ones that came in today, paying those, uh, without having a chance to review them at all. The other ones, I had, I had some questions on the other ones, um, before that, but I didn't get a chance to go through these, so. I don't know how the council feels on the ones we received today, if they delay them a month. Looking at them, I don't know if there'd be a penalty on any of those, but it looks like most of those were, were contractors.
Correct.
And, uh, and some of them, I mean, Smith and Glazer here, this is months old. And there's something on here, the original portion of it is, uh, from, it was October 2019 to December, I think it's a typo 2016. That there was some kind of split fee on their split billing, so I'm guessing it's October to December of last year. So they've never been overly anxious on their billing.
Yeah, none of the, the, um, claims that came in today or this past week, they can be pushed off for a month. I just receive them and think, well, I have a week that I can still get the additional claims in. So I presented them to you today, all of the claims that I have from the past week. And if they're not going to be approved right now, we can put them out for next month.
Yeah, because again, when I was going through the, the ones we have on our original packet here, um, we had, Hawkinson Anderson was already 19, uh, $20,000 for Hawkinson Anderson and today we got another 11,000. So we're at, uh, 31,000 for Hawkinson Anderson. So I, you know, if we had a question on it, we'd normally ask you. And I'm not comfortable with another, because I haven't seen the billing yet to see what it is paying $30,000 for. So I would like to hold back on the ones that were submitted today. And then if, if we had any questions on the ones that we've gotten previously, um, discuss those. If the council agrees with that and if Lori, if that's not gonna give us some trouble with any vendors.
No, it won't.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I, I, I agree with you. Uh, those ones that came in late, um, I think we should be able to have a chance to look at those and, um, ask any questions that we feel are relevant. And, and go back to the old, it has to be in by the, the specific date, that if it isn't, then it, it waits.
All right, so as a council, are we all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would think having the workshop ahead of time, we can nail most of the questions and, yeah, then that puts a.
Puts a deadline on it and then we have that. So let's plan on that. If, if you communicate to the contractors, um, your deadlines so that we can have it, a packet ready to, to have before our workshop next month. And then, uh, the question I had on, on this month's, the ones we are accepting, uh, Smith and Glazer. And again, it's, 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 uh, I think Mary had referred to this earlier, that it does seem like we see a lot of the same names month after month. There's times that they, it seems like, I have to go back and say, this almost looks exactly like what we had last one. But what I noticed is, this month, we're, we're getting things I hadn't paid attention to before and maybe they're detailing it slightly differently. But we've got something called general process. Repeatedly, general process. And it's typically a hundred dollars or less. But, um, you know, in, in January and February, um, here's a general process includes some trial prep. So I'm not exactly sure what that means, attend court. And so, again, with that discussion we had earlier, it may be very obvious to them, but we need to know what that is and then, and how that's being charged. Because here's an attend court for $166. I'm not sure what that means. But general process, again, including preparation. But then we started getting into general process and, um, TCW is.
Mayor and council, I did talk to Mr. Glazer and asked him if he can explain the invoicing. I, I asked if he could come to our, one of our next meetings so that, once we get back to the normal meeting dates again, to introduce himself and to go over the format of his invoices.
This one says, I didn't know if it was you, it's TCW Lori. And then it says county parking tickets.
Telephone call with Lori?
Well, I was thinking, but.
I did talk to him.
You talking about county parking tickets?
No.
Because I'm like, what the heck do we have to do with county parking tickets?
Different Lori?
Hey, yeah, I mean, there's probably another Lori out there somewhere, but it just, it's one of those things, you look at it and, and it's county parking tickets. I'm just not sure how it applies to us. And, uh, so we got a whole page of generals on page six, general process. And then we start getting into COVID, coronavirus. So on, on page two of the March bills, it says, address pandemic issues, general process for $166. Then we're general process. And then addressing pandemic issues. Now, the one I, I can guess, address coronavirus procedures for court and jail, the split billing. That makes some sense, like, okay, how is the court gonna handle this? But before that, we had addressing pandemic issues. After that, we have addressing pandemic issues. Again, on the 20th, we have addressing pandemic issues and on the 23rd and 24th, we have addressing pandemic events.
Mayor and council, when I talked to him, he said that his billing is going to look different because of the pandemic, the COVID, how they're handling things now. We'll be seeing a lot of those terms in his invoicing. But like I told him, we're not understanding the invoicing already, so it would be best if he came in and explained what we're seeing. So we know what we're paying for.
Yeah, it just seems $142. Yeah, it just seems $142 to, here's 190, 142, about averaging $142. And all it says is address pandemic event or issue. And I just, I'm not sure, once you know the procedure, what you're charging an hour and a half for.
And with his delayed billing, I don't think he would mind if we put it out until next month to pay that one.
Yeah.
And ask him how his billing is working.
Yeah, I would prefer that. Is council okay with that?
Yes.
Everybody here said yes? Mary, what do you say?
Yes.
All right. So we'll hold back on the ones we received late. We'll hold back on Kurt's and get an explanation. And then I think it's reasonable to take a look at what we're being billed from Ramsey to see if it's consistent with the JPA as opposed to their arbitrarily submitting invoices for things that they think we've written on, but we haven't actually yet.
And I haven't noticed anything different. So if there's something in particular, I can certainly ask about it.
Yeah, we're getting some charges for Carrie, we're getting charges for Chris.
Those would be investigative probably for the fires, but I can find out.
Yeah, let's find out, because it's been a while since we've had a fire. But if you take, take a look at those bills and see if some of those, because I noticed when the JPA draft that we got, they assumed everything into this year. And they're looking to impose the $163,000 on us next year. So I don't, I don't feel, I'm not ready to pay $13,000 a month. And I don't want them starting without an agreement, because we've been asking for a follow-up on that last board meeting, but there's never been a sign-off on what we talked about. We generally agreed to it, but we haven't seen anything formal, so I don't want to be paying things and then try to have to recover on it, so. So today's Kurt's are to Smith and Glazer and then the Ramsey bills.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Is everything else that's on the financial report approved?
I noticed, that's the only question I had, unless anybody else in the council had questions. So seeing that, then you're gonna make a motion to approve the rest of it?
I was going to make a motion to approve the rest of it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of it excluding the Smith and Glazer invoices and the City of Ramsey Fire Service invoices.
And the ones we got today.
And the ones we got today.
I second it.
Motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor and Council, are you okay with me paying the Ramsey invoice from February?
If you look through it, it looks like they're all about the same. So just look through it and make sure there's nothing there that's not in the JPA yet.
Correct, okay.
Because I know I was thinking about that last month, and I thought, I'm not sure all this is in the JPA. I went to look at my invoice and I didn't find it here yet.
I'm just thinking, since that one, I was called on that one, that it hadn't been paid, it's past due, I want to make sure that we get that.
Take a look and see if everything is consistent with the JPA that currently exists, since we haven't passed a new one yet. And if it is, I would say pay it. If there's things that, they look like they're adding fees because they said they wanted to, I would hold off on it until we get our fire board meeting. All right. Recycle Center. Mayor, you wanted to bring that up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that Saturday is our first recycle date that we're, our council is hosting. Lori, I'm assuming that Joe and Eric have been advised that they'll be working.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I will, I've always provided treats, store boxes, sorry, and water and juices. If people are comfortable with that, I will do that again for council and staff. If people in today's environment aren't comfortable, I mean, I'm just gonna go to bills, I'm gonna buy them the bills and bring them over. So let me know if you're comfortable with that. And I will provide water, juice, and some, you know, like nature bars and things like that. Also too, is we have to think about gloves and masks. Lori, were you ever able to, after one of our last meetings, research and purchase gloves or masks for city offices?
Councilmember Rainville, yes, I do have gloves and masks and hand sanitizer.
Okay. So if we could have that, some of those available, I mean, I have, I have my own mask, I'll bring mine. And then I will, I'll just, we'll have to figure out who's gonna do what, and I'll work on that this week. I'm touching base with both A1, who's going to pick up our appliances, and Lake State, who is going to do our electronics. And then mosquito control, I'll just contact them after the, after the event to tell them how many tires we have, where they're at, and then they'll come and get those. So prior to, if Joe can have the containers out, we're gonna start at nine, I think it was. Did the postcards go out?
Mayor and Council, the postcards went to the printer last Friday or Thursday?
Okay.
I think it was Thursday. They printed on Friday and got into Saturday's mail. So they should be hitting mailboxes today, tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd get mine today.
Okay, sounds good. I don't think, I don't know if we've gone out to get them out yet today, so.
I don't either.
All right, so I think we're running eight, nine to noon, but if there's a line, I think we'll just let people stay in line and we'll finish them up. I'm just wondering if council has any questions on anything.
I was gonna ask, you know, who is, who is going to provide some guidances to, first of all, is everyone in the council planning on being there? Okay, it was all yeses? So yes, who's gonna be checking the postcards and who's going to be guiding where people go with the, I'm guessing people are gonna come with mixed loads. Typically, like in Ramsey, you come in and they have a line that says electronics here, this here, and we don't have signs per se, so we're gonna have to tell people where to go with it. I don't know if A1 was gonna bring a trailer or just gonna, we're gonna put them in an open bay? I guess, I guess that direction is what we need. Are electronics going into an open bay? Are the, the containers are gonna be out there, people can throw their clearly identified stuff in there? Can bottles, metal? Small engine guy did say he'll be here both days.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
What time do you want us there? It starts at nine, so what time do you want the council there?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would ask that council be there at 8:30 along with staff. And then, yeah, direction to Joe would be to pull out the dumpster for the metal, the scrap metal, and then pull out the tin can, the plastic, the glass, pull those out, we'll direct people to those. I will make up for something this week, make up some temporary signs that we can tape onto the containers. And my thought is I would have somebody standing on 199th, directing people in, looking at their postcards. They can keep their postcards because they can come back the next week if they still have stuff. So they would keep their postcard, they come in on 199th, that person, and I'll write up a little script. But basically, the script is gonna be what items you have, okay, here's, you know, starting from, go say from west to east. This is glass, this is cans, this is plastic. If you have cardboard, you have to take it in. Electronics go into this bay, tires go into this bay, and appliances go into this bay. I did let A1, and I will confirm with them what they're gonna do to decide whether they wanna bring a semi, and things would go into a semi, or whether they would have a trailer part would just go into the bay and we would deal with it, you know, after, on Monday. So I have to just confirm that with them. So I'm not gonna try to overthink it.
Mr. Mayor.
Use the process and...
Councilmember Greenberg.
Mary, I think you'd be a great one to check the postcards.
I'm sorry, what?
I think Mary Rainville would be a great person to check postcards.
I, or Linda, what, it's, we can, I mean, if you have a preference, send it to me.
It'd be arm wrestling, I can see it.
I would, I would like to help unload heavy stuff.
Okay.
TVs, appliances, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
I tend to be stronger in the back than in the mind.
Okay.
So let the smart people check the postcards, let the dumb people unload heavy stuff.
All right, I won't, I'll put that together. Any other questions, just send them to Lori and Lori can shoot them my way. But thanks for everybody participating, I appreciate it.
Did this go, did you put it on Facebook?
Yes.
Has there been a response?
Yeah.
A good one?
Yeah.
Some people don't think it's a good idea?
Well, there's two bulletin boards. One bulletin board, there was a very positive response, and the other bulletin board, quite a negative response. Through various responses to those responses, we've gotten to be, we've gotten our citizens to be well-informed on what we've been doing and why we are doing what we are doing.
What was the concern or the stated reason for being negative? Bad show.
I think to boil it down would be consternation over the closing of the recycling center. That would be the crux of the discussions. But along the way would be things like, why can't we bring the oil? So I had a response to that. Why can't we bring a mattress? We had a response to that. Stuff like that. Councilmember Bryan and I were able to smooth out most of the wrinkles, and there's been a little activity as of late. There was a flurry of activity, we put our posts in, and then the flurry kind of calmed down. So I'm finding that when we're able to respond to some of the bigger, more pointed questions quickly, it tends to put water on the fire, so to speak.
I'm always amazed.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Could I, I'd like to ask either Councilmember Greenberg or Councilmember Bryan to provide me with a readout of those comments?
I don't, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
I don't think at this point in time, it's appropriate to be reading Facebook responses.
All right.
Yeah, I think that it doesn't, doesn't serve a purpose. I mean, people are gonna be what people are gonna be, and I think our intentions are good. I think it's been wise to shut down without the county help and have people randomly putting things in there. I think it's generous on the part of the city staff and council to make provisions at a no-charge open up like this. And if people can't appreciate that, you know, I, I'm not gonna waste a lot of time. I appreciate Joel and Dan throwing water on as best you can. People are gonna be the way people are.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would say let's get through these two Saturdays, and then we can see where things are at, and, you know, and we can reevaluate now that, you know, we have a policy for enforcing things, and we can reevaluate where we're at with the recycle center.
All right. Have you had any feedback at the city office on the phone calls?
We have, every day we're telling people about the Saturdays that are coming up, and we're pleased. Everyone that's called is very happy that we're opening up for a couple days for them to bring their things.
Good. Just as a side note here, did we, the note we got from the county was they're gonna replace a culvert on 201st? Do we know they're gonna rip up the whole road?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I live on 201st, I'm surprised too. They ripped up the whole road.
It's completely gone.
I stopped, when I was walking Monday, and Joe and Eric stopped, and I said, they're gonna make it, put a new culvert in down there. And I said, yeah. And then Eric said, well, I stopped the guy who was measuring and doing all the work, and I told him, this whole road needs to be torn up, it's just a mess. And the guy said, I agree. He said, this is, this road really looks bad. So maybe the guy went back and totaled the whole road.
We should complain about a few more county roads. Anyway, I was surprised with that one, so.
We'll see everybody on Saturday.
I did it.
All right, so then Joe, wanna talk about the logo?
All right, I know Mary can't see this, but I'm just gonna hold it up.
Mary's got it on the line.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna show you a quick synopsis of where we've been, so just throw your eyes over here, just to show you the path that I've been down, trying various layouts, trying various fonts, trying various colors. Here's some of my compositions that I sketched up. Then I wanted to use an illustration of my own, so we wouldn't run into copyright issues. So I went around the community looking at the various barns, decided on this one being the cutest, most recognizable red barn quintessential barn look that I think is in Now Then. Here's some more layouts. I tried out, I tried out one that looked like this. So I think by and large, Now Then is a past tense farming community, not a growing farming community.
Right.
So I went more with the barns that are here are 50 to 100 years old, if not 100 years old. And the ones that are here are in decaying shape. So anyways, so that's where I went with that. So Lori and I got together and hashed out a couple of different looks. So if you look at your stapled one, this one here has a couple of the barns with the gold sunset or the blue sky, which was the vein that Lori was taking. And then if you look at page two, this was the vein that I was going with, the quintessential red barn look that I thought encapsulated the Now Then experience.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
I love the clarity of the one with the white background, because you really see that, that barn clearly, and it's drawn beautifully.
All right, so you're talking to one with the green field, or wait?
I like the top one personally.
All right, so you're on page two?
Yeah. And on the other side, I really like that blue background.
So she likes the blue one on page one, and on page two, you like number what? One, two, three, or four? Number two?
No, is it two? No, it's one.
The top one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Top left or top right?
I like the bigger one.
So here's the idea. Dan Bryan informed me that the sign needs to have a new logo. So this would be the proposed logo, this would be the proposed sign. The sign is out front.
Okay.
Our city sign is a long skinny sign. So in each one of these cases, I've given my proposed city logo on the left, and then what that same logo would be like on a very stretched out area. Does that make sense? So they're not two different logos, they're essentially the same logo used in a wide format for the sign. But still, using the same elements, the same font, the way I stretch the font, or the same elements that are in the logo. So that's why if you go to page one, you can see the blue, the blue ones, like in the one that Linda was talking about. We got the Now Then, which has the stretched Now Then type over the top of that red barn with the blue background. And then for the long skinny sign, I kept that stretched type of the word Now Then with that bridge look, and then that blue sky square. of the word Now Then with that bridge look, and then that blue sky square, you know. I don't know, am I making myself clear? It sounds like my words are bouncing off the ceiling. So one is for letterheads, web sites, and that would be the upper-left one. And then on the right where it's stretched out, that would only be for our city sign, which is in horrible shape. Right, Dan Bryan?
Right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Uh, I like the one, uh, as far as the, the logo, um, the sheet that does not have the blue on it. Um, I like the bottom, um, bottom right-hand side for the logo. And then I like the one to the right of that for the sign. Um, I worry about, I, I, I like the color and the blue, I just don't know if that's gonna be too much for a sign. If it gets too busy. And I like that blue, it's really pretty, um, but I just wonder if it, if it gets to be too much. Uh, I don't like the bridge, um, font, I, I like the straight across.
I think that's one of the, the challenges we always had, always have had with Now Then is it's an unusual name, and so it has to be readable, because people look at it quickly and it's northern, it's what?
Okay.
And, and my concern with that particular font is, is you've got a, an unusual W and an H, where the cross member is going up. You just, it's, it's hard to represent Now Then. We, we have, uh, I should've brought that sign in, we have a sign that we had, it's probably one of the clearest Ws we'd, we'd seen on that. Yeah, I think with the bridge sign, it makes it tougher.
Mr. Mayor, are you saying you don't like the font on any of these?
Well, it's, it's the same, same W. The concern I have about the top ones is when you put the windmill in, in covering part of Now Then, it makes it really difficult to know what that word is.
Okay. How about the third one down?
Again, because I think the bridge, when you gotta...
There's no bridge on that one, the third one down.
This one?
This one right here.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the...
Oh, and I'm talking about this.
Yeah. This is the same. These two are the same.
Yep.
But it's, the difference is here.
So you think, Mr. Mayor, you think this one's better?
Now, if, if you take a look at this, these fonts here, see, to me that reads easier than, than this font, on Now Then.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Joel a question?
Yes, you may.
Which one is going on the so, sign for the city?
The one's on the right.
The one on the right.
Okay.
See, 'cause that sign is long and stretched out, and if you look at it, it has the little picture of the barn. It has a little picture of the barn, and then it says the city of Now Then, where it still feels like country next to it.
Where is that sign?
It's right, uh, fifty feet that way.
In the parking lot, right here.
The big lighted sign.
Oh, the electric sign!
Yeah.
And why is that out?
It's just getting old.
It's old.
Oh, okay.
You can quick...
Okay, this is what we're replacing that.
I was kinda wondering why the messages, this one changed. I sat out there for half an hour there, waiting for something to happen.
So the logo...
Should look like the sign.
Should look like the sign.
I agree.
But the sign is long and skinny.
But still, this, if you have this kind of logo and this sign, it looks the same.
It looks just similar, yeah.
Right.
Well, well, my opinion would be you wanna make Now Then as easy to read on a quick glance as possible, because that's the challenge I've had over the years is, is having lived here for thirty-five years, I don't think twice when I say Now Then, but people look at you and they say, "What?"
Melvin.
Melvin, northern, I mean, I still get everything addressed to northern. You're, you're very clear spelling it, typing it out, but the people still change it to northern, so.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I appreciate if we're gonna keep the farm imagery, the, you know, something that isn't copyrighted or patented somewhere else. Joel's work's very nice.
Very nice.
So, feedback from Mayor Pilon, he likes the straight font, no bridge, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and when I look at this, Joel, this isn't a bridge because you've got the same size letters, where this one is more of a bridge. So I don't mind the round as much.
So you like the, you like the arc?
Yeah.
Okay.
The arc's fine, but...
All right, can I ask you about the farm illustrations? Do you like the one that I had made with the little red barn here? Or do you like the ones here that I got from shutterstock.com?
I like the one you made.
Okay. Linda?
I like the one you made. I think it's clearer. I, I like that blue, but I think that it's clearer. And I, I've lived here for twenty years, so I don't know if there's an issue with, uh, no one seems to get that name no matter how you write it. So, uh, I kinda like this thicker writing at the bottom.
So straight, no arc, okay?
That's how I like it.
And actually, this, this font that you have here, Joel?
You kinda like that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause again, it's, it's something a little more, it's one of the, one of the challenges is when you're doing something, if you're gonna go historic, you can't mix the modern and historic, so.
All right, but, Mr. Mayor, don't you think the one you chose is more of a modern look than historic? Yeah.
No.
See, now I think this looks historic and that looks more modern, that whole, the, the blocking of the letters. This makes it look older. But, Mr. Mayor, I do wanna defer to you that the issue of reading the name is something you've dealt with and I haven't, so there you go.
Dan, can I get some feedback from you?
These are, uh, thank you for what you've done, but this is very difficult to read word-wise, Now Then, the words.
So same, same issue as the mayor?
I would, that would, yeah.
Okay, difficulty, so, different font?
I just like a simple, straightforward font. I mean, arc is fine with me. Straightest, I like, I like, I'm liking these. I, what barn is you, which is your barn, and you were asking about barns?
Well, the colored ones are the ones I got from shutterstock.com and will pay royalty on.
Oh, so you draw these?
The other barn is what I drew from the sketch, if you see the sketch there.
Yeah.
These barns?
Yeah.
I would pick these barns myself.
Okay.
But I don't know what, I don't know, just from a visual, but I don't know if Lori has any preferences.
So, um, you like the straight font, or does it matter? You just want a more readable, readable font?
It's just gotta be readable, these, this, these seem like they're taking up too much space in this space that they're given.
Yeah, that's, that's why I like some of those proportion-wise.
I mean, we don't, just because the sign is, whatever, two by four, doesn't mean we need to take up all the two by four. It's okay to have white space on there. In my opinion. But I think Lori has something she wanted to say too.
Right, well, let's go to Mary. Mary, do you have anything?
Thanks, Councilmember Greenberg and Lori for your work on this. Um, I, I like the plain, the, the bottom one, uh, with Now Then on the bottom. Um, I do want a, a font though that's easily, e- easily readable. Um, it is, because of the, the type of letters that are there, it, it can be confusing. So I like the, the bottom right-hand, uh, the, the bo, the bottom left-hand one for the logo, and I like the bottom right-hand one, uh, for the sign.
Is this, is this the gold and blue ones, or no?
Not, not the blue, no.
Oh, so this is, okay, so you like the bottom row?
Yeah, bottom row without the blue. I mean, I like the blue, um, and I, I like the yellow, the little sunrise in there.
I mean, I can throw blue in this background.
Too, I just think it gets too much, and then it gets lost. But it's, I like it, it's just, I don't know how it would print out and...
I'm thinking page two's gonna work better on letterhead. But that's my opinion.
So do you guys kinda like the bottom one too, where the text is underneath the barn instead of over the top of it? Thus eliminating the, uh, barn running into the text?
Yeah, somehow you made it work on this one. These two? Because the barn didn't, doesn't run into the text, but...
For a logo?
Right, well, what I'd like to do is continue, uh, with this vein here and develop that vein as well, and have both choices.
All right, so at this point, the consensus, Lori, did you wanna weigh in, or you just wanted to...
Oh yeah, Lori, let's get your feedback.
Mary, council, I think I would recommend, I do like the, the barn that Joel has drawn is my favorite. I think that's, it would be unique to us then, nobody else can own this barn. And I do like the bottom, the, um, left-hand side where it's straight writing down. I do think it should say city of on there also. And then, um, to the right, I do like, um, the sign.
Did you, did you see these, Lori, with the city of on that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I like the idea that city of, because again, Now Then could be, now what?
Somebody might not know what that is if they're driving through, or they may not know they're in the city of Now Then.
Okay.
They might think we're asking them a question. Now Then, what are you doing here? So I like, I like city of Now Then.
Even if you took Joel's barn and plugged it into...
Yeah, I think that's what you were saying, you're gonna try and incorporate some of that.
Right.
But yes, I, I agree that it needs a city of. This one looks like a banner, which is nice, this one, the city stands out. But, yeah, with your barn, it's...
Yeah, so the, one of the issues I have when I go straight underneath and then I try and fit the word city of in it, then I need to take up some of the barn. So that is why I chose to do that. So that solves that problem if we do that. So like this one, this is pretty close to what we were talking about. People like the Now Then underneath the barn, but if I put city of, it looks goofy on top of the barn, so I didn't actually do it anywhere. It looks better when it's right on top of city of.
If you took it here, you'd take out some of your fields. You'd put it underneath like this.
Yeah, 'cause we had, um, where's the copy I have given you? Right here. Yeah, so like this one here, a few people like this one. I have to move down the word Now Then and try and fit city of in there. It simply, to me, looks silly if I go city of and then Now Then with the barn in between.
Yeah, that's, that's why I thought if you could incorporate that with this.
Yeah.
'Cause it looks like these are about the same size. So anyway, anything else you wanna say, Lori, on that? So readable Now Then, um, add the city of. Right now, the consensus is your barn... City of Now Then. I'm sorry. Your barn, font that's readable, and take a look at those options either above or below with, with a font that's more readable.
Sure.
You even have to go on?
Yeah. And you like city of versus the city of?
Yeah.
Okay.
That make sense to people?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? And, and Lori, thank you for your patience on this, I know you wanted to do this a year ago.
I think you know my personality, I like to do things right now.
And, and so we appreciate your patience, and I, I just wanna say, um, because we haven't been getting together here and we haven't had a chance for feedback, I, I look forward to workshops so we can improve our communication overall. Um, but I, I wanna say you've been doing an outstanding job, as I mentioned, coming in here even to the city hall today. I can tell the difference, the fact that you guys are doing this as opposed to somebody else. Um, this is the cleanest I've seen of steps coming up here in forever. Um, the, the, getting into the city offices and seeing the, the wonders that you've been doing there and knowing that stuff's online, so thank you very much for, uh, for what you've been doing, um, in all this confusion we've been going through. Thank the council for, um, coming together and opening up recycling. Not everybody's gonna be happy all the time, but I, I appreciate staff and, and council working together on this. And I, I think in light of, of all that's been going on, the staff has been doing a wonderful job, the council's been holding up very well, flexibility. And so I appreciate the, the team we have here and the improvements we're seeing, so. Thank you, Lori, thank the, the staff for us that, um, you know, and in case you guys haven't heard, earlier this year, we approved a, um, hot asphalt, um, addition for our truck. And the, the boys, the men have been using it, uh, and are very pleased with it, very good results. Uh, they've been using it to patch up a lot of what we've been doing in Rogers Lake. So I know they're grateful for that, and I'm grateful with the council for jumping on that and doing that. So again, to me, that, that shows what we get when, when Lori and the team communicate to us what we need and we respond positively. I, I think it's evidence of, we can see in, in our buildings, we can see in, in the attitudes when we talk to staff and, uh, the residents who've been talking to staff, I think it's been going very well, so. Thank you for that, and, uh, thanks to the, the council, I've, I've enjoyed working with these councils.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
On that note, if no one has anything else, motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion to adjourn and second, and we are adjourned.
Night, all.
Good night.
Night, Mary, Gary.